Hearings this evening, we have one bid to award. We will call on the city administrator in the Breck set to walk us through the wording of contract for public improvement five three seven.
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Council was filling in for Brian this evening on July, excuse me, Tuesday, February twenty seven, twenty twenty four. The bid line typo there. Bids were open for our annual seal coat improvement project. This year referred to as public improvement five three seven two. Three bids were received at the bid opening. Asphalt preservation company APC out of Detroit, Texas, Minnesota was the low bidder with their total bid amount of two hundred and fifty seven thousand, eight hundred and forty seven dollars and eighteen cents. Engineer's estimate for the project was two hundred and seventy eight thousand, five hundred and ninety seven, so about twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars under engineer's estimate, so pretty good bids. You can see in the memo, the bid tabulation and how the breakdown is, the bid amount two hundred and fifty seven thousand, five percent construction contingency, thirty eight thousand dollars for design and administration costs with soft costs involved. We're looking at a total project cost of just over three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Funding sources for the three hundred and ten thousand dollar project, a hundred and seventy three thousand, one hundred comes out of the twenty twenty four tax levy. A hundred thousand is carried over from the twenty twenty three tax levy. We did not have a seal coat project in twenty twenty three. We received a check from a contractor for thirty three thousand, one hundred and forty three dollars and forty two cents, and then a small portion out of general NSA maintenance dollars. Explaining the contractor funds mentioned there, there was a contractor that was previously awarded work to do a seal coat and some striping on a couple of those streets, which is in the summit from Burlington to Concord area, including Concord, Riverside, and Pec Street. And what we did was we bid that project as an alternate to the seal coat project. That alternate came in at thirty three thousand, one hundred and forty three dollars and forty two cents, and this contractor that was previously scheduled to do the work gave us a check for that amount, completely covered the cost of that bid alternate. So that's what that is referring to there. This twenty twenty four steel coat project is very robust. It's probably the largest one we've ever done. You can see the map in our packet and on the screen here, all of the streets in the dark black are included in the seal coat project. So it covers a really large area. There's a complete list of those on the bid tabulation page in your packet. So yeah, it's going to be a big project. Prices came in good, and if the council wishes to proceed, we need a resolution this evening awarding the construction contract asphalt preservation company in the amount of two hundred and fifty seven thousand, eight hundred and forty seven dollars and eighteen cents, which is the base bid plus the alternate that I'm talking about.
Thanks, Andrew. Can you accomplish this through a resolution?
I'll go ahead.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Anthony. Questions for the city administrator? Role call, please.
Joe. Yes. Quamie.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Craymeyer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Next, we will move to the open forum portion of the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak to the council pertaining to any item not on the agenda is welcome to do so at this time. If you left and states your name for the record, please.
Good evening. I am Becky Schwartz, resident of the fourth ward. I am here tonight to talk to you in regard to the March for the city council meeting. At the time of the open forum, Al Craymeyer resigned his seat as a councilperson. He stated, Lynn, let the record know I am temporarily stepping down from my third ward council seat. Section two point oh four of the city charter discusses vacancies, among other things noting a vacancy in the council shall be deemed to exist if the council member resigns. It goes on to say, quote, "The council shall by resolution declare such a vacancy to exist and shall forthwith appoint an eligible person to fill the same until the next regular municipal election, when the office shall be filled for the unexpired term. I am greatly concerned that Mr. Craymeyer declared he would reassume his seat. Under the charter, I do not believe that this was a legal process. I have reached out to my ward representatives and the mayor with this concern, and I anticipate this will be addressed through the proper channels. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening? Hearing no one, we will move along to the consent agenda tonight. There are five items on the consent agenda. We can approve those through a resolution unless someone would like to talk about any items individually.
I would offer that resolution, your honor.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll.
Well.
Thank you, Brent.
One of us.
Role call, please.
Joe. Yes. Quamie.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Craymeyer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, there are items for consideration this evening. The first is a first reading of ordinance fifty seven, eighth series, regarding the licensing of the back of sales in a B two zone. If anyone has any questions, I'll direct them to either our city administrator or our attorney. But we just need this introduced this evening. Thank you, Anthony. Second item is a second reading of ordinance fifty five, eighth series, relating to the rezoning of two thousand and eight county highway one eleven from an R one to an R eight zone requested by Alex and Megan Wando. Before the council had a first reading, if anyone had any questions, we will address those at this time. Role call, please.
Joe. Yes. Quamie.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Craymeyer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
That ordinance is approved. We also have the second reading of ordinance fifty six, eighth series, relating to the rezoning of a property located at eight oh one West Stanton Avenue from an I two to an R four zone, as requested by the city of Fergus Falls on behalf of Mark and Brenda Christopherson. Note that this is contingent upon the sale of the property. Again, this has been discussed by the council. It's had a first read. If anyone has any questions, we can address those at this point. Role call.
Joe. Yes. Quamie.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Craymeyer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
That ordinance is approved. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of one million, seven hundred and seventy nine thousand, six hundred and fifty eight dollars and fifty one cents. If anyone has any questions, we'll direct them to finance director. Does someone want more? Someone like to offer a resolution?
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Role call, please.
Joe. Yes. Quamie.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Craymeyer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports this evening. Under reports from staff and administrative officers, first, we will discuss and review the two thousand twenty four Pebble Lake lifeguard agreement, and we'll call on the public books director, Brad Yeo. Good evening, guy.
Good evening. Thank you, your honor. The time for renewing the contract with YMCA for lifeguarding services was at hand, so Pam reached out to YMCA, and they indicated that they were going to be seeking a thirty five thousand dollar fee for their services this year, up ten thousand dollars from the fee that we've been paying for the last six years, I think. So Park Board discussed this at their most recent meeting, and they are recommending to the council that we not renew a contract with YMCA at this time, that we just establish a swim at your own risk policy at Pebble Beach, and then when the splash pad and the pool open up, we'll have those resources reallocated to those facilities, and just keep Pebble Beach a swim at your own risk beach, like many in the county are.
Thanks, Brad.
Just open for discussion, see what your wishes are.
So you mentioned that the contract's been at twenty five thousand for a number of years, six years?
Yeah, it's a number of years.
Correct. Is it also, and I understand the YMCA, they have budgets just like we all do, and we know what our budgets have been like, but those hours have been diminishing as well. Is that correct? I mean, the number of lifeguard hours has been reduced during that time?
Yeah, it has been reduced. We're going to be, the proposal was for eight weeks of lifeguarding this summer.
Even the time, even the time, they don't start till after noon, is that?
Yeah, one thirty to five thirty, I believe is what they're allowing.
I am anxious to hear another thing. You know, I know that when we, six years ago, seven years ago, this was important to a number of people and young families when we did reestablish lifeguards in Pebble Beach. So, yeah, I guess I would like to, I understand, and they make a good point that next year we won't have the resources to have lifeguards at two separate swimming facilities within the city, let alone the staff capability to staff it. Is it, I would like to hear from, I'm wondering if there's families out there, the public, that this is a big deal, you know, like this is the ability for the kids, they feel safe for the kids to swim. I don't know the answer to that question, but anyway, that's some of my thoughts.
If we break it down, guys, a hundred and fifty six dollars an hour, that's all it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are they staffed, like, seven days a week?
It is seven days a week, one to five thirty.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this something, is it something that, if we brought this up and asked the public to weigh in over the next two weeks, is there a reason that we couldn't act in two weeks on the contract?
There's still time for that, yes.
I understand the concerns, and I take the, I appreciate the recommendation from the Park Board. I just, I remember what, you know, the families, that this was important to them six years ago when we did this, and I would hate to just do it in a snap without at least giving some people the time to weigh in on what it means to them and their family and their kids. That's my thoughts, yeah.
And then just to reiterate, we have twenty five thousand in the budget. We do not have thirty five thousand in the budget for it, so.
Yeah, so I mean, is there a way that we could just buy twenty five thousand dollars as opposed to start at like three o'clock till five thirty, as opposed to one o'clock? Or we knock off, you know, weekends or something, you know, so that we can, we provide some service, but not everything?
I mean, we, yeah, we do have it in the budget, the budget passes.
We only have twenty five thousand to spend, and that's what we can spend that.
Yeah. So was it a motion to bring it back to the YMCA with a counterproposal of twenty five thousand dollars?
Yeah, I would make that, I would make that.
Thanks. Second?
Now, we just have lifeguards on at those times, but we are still open all the other times. We just don't have lifeguards on at the other times?
Yeah, it is open, like any city park, it's still open from six AM to ten PM.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's swim at your own risk apart from those.
So basically, we could take it from like one to five thirty, down to like two to five thirty or anything else in order to bring it down? It'd just be a smaller window of having a lifeguard on duty?
Correct.
Second to the motion? Yeah, thanks, Scott. Okay, go ahead. Brent, if you had other questions, or Scott?
I think you have any suggestions or views, the days is probably more practical. I mean, you get someone to work for three hours, you might not get anybody interested in such a small job, so to speak, whereas having it be a substantial enough time to be able to show up for the job, but maybe five days a week instead of seven, you know, we have suggested the YMCA, you know, if we can get back where twenty five thousand.
I mean, I think, as you say, any play on, you know, balancing the budget and getting coverage, I mean, do we have to have two of them at the same time? I mean, we go from zero lifeguards to having two lifeguards, so, you know, why don't we have one start at, you know, say, you know, twelve o'clock, and then one runs until, say, three, and somebody else comes out all day, cover the day. I think there's more than one way to kind of like cover it out.
I think there's rules for the lifeguarding that come into play.
There's a lifeguard for the lifeguard.
Yeah, basically, you gotta be there to give them a break every so often.
Would it, so the motion is, I think, to ask staff to come back with, just reach back out to the YMCA and see if Park Board or Pam or?
Alternative to shit, if it's more practical for them to do, as you say, Monday through Friday or whatever, then the chances are that weekend, parents are more available to go down with their kids than a weekday.
Sounds reasonable, so. Any other questions? I'll favor that motion to ask staff to come back with some further recommendations after further conversations with YMCA. Say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, guy.
Thank you.
Next item is a consideration of resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of an air conditioning system at the community arena.
Thank you, your honor. When the city purchased the chiller from the school district, and we separated the whole system from being, serving two facilities to just our facility, that took away capabilities to cool our portion of the building, and we found out last summer, when we were operating kids camp and the summer ice programs, that moisture was becoming a problem, and just the overall heat and humidity in the building was pretty uncomfortable. And so to get some air conditioning in the building, we've been working through a few different companies to try to come up with a design at a good price, and we've got a price from Mission Mechanical, it would be fifty eight thousand, some dollars to air condition one portion of the building, and then the same amount for another portion of the building. And we're strategically doing it in two separate projects to work with the state under their hundred thousand dollar limit. So it's two projects, one, one area would cool, or one project would cool the north half of the upper hallway, and the other would cool the south half. So it's two areas that are most used in the summer, and then we would look to also do a project that would hook the system back up and utilize the chiller, where these are standalone air handling units. The chiller would actually be rehooked in a future project, chill the lobby areas and the main arena locker rooms, and potentially the whole south arena. But once before, the resolution on seeking tight is just to purchase and install air conditioning for its S four and S five areas of the community arena.
Thanks, guy. Would you like to offer?
Let's talk about the funding source a bit first.
Sure.
If you recall, we have the funds that are separate from the arena operating account, we have a separate capital account. It was funds left after we constructed it. That's what we purchased the original chiller from, from the school with that. So we currently have a cash balance of that fund of just about four hundred and sixteen thousand, transferring a bid out as we were closing funds for the year of seven thousand six sixty nine. So this hundred and twelve, six oh two, would then bring that down to two ninety five six seventy six. So, you know, we'll, we'll want it to be working as with future budgets to increase the capital contributions coming back in. It's one of the challenges we'll have moving forward as well, but we'll still have just about three hundred thousand in, but it's, that's where it would come from, so.
So, thanks, Bill. And from the perspective of maintaining the city asset, too, I've been, arenas all over the state, and I've seen arenas that have had untracked moisture issues, and they, I mean, it's hard. Yeah, once you get behind that eight ball, it's hard to recover. Yeah, so we need to, we need to protect our assets and make sure they're here for future generations to use.
Someone like to offer a resolution, and we can have further discussion.
Oh, I'll offer that.
Yeah, thanks. Tom?
I'll second.
Scott?
Now, just a question. Bill, what was that? Did you say a hundred and twelve? What was that for?
That was these two units, right, Guy, of fifty six thousand, three oh one?
All right.
So the two of them, that's.
I was thinking of the fifty, okay.
Yep.
I was thinking of the fifty eight.
Yeah. I spoke.
Scott?
So the arena was air conditioned before we took it over, but we lost it last year's outbreak, they're saying to us?
Yeah, when the chiller was separated out, when the school went on their own system, then we lost air conditioning.
We just operated, oh, here last year.
We did.
Yeah, okay, I knew we had a lot of trouble, but I couldn't remember. I didn't know, I thought it was just something that was occurring all the time.
So will these units also be used in the winter time on a?
Nope, just purely air conditioned.
In the winter, because there's different units.
Right.
You know, to kind of like, because you can air condition buildings obviously in the winter, too, but.
Yeah, so the main, the heat source is still derived from the school system off their boilers, and then we have air handling units that move that air around, and will introduce the fresh air.
Right.
So it's still a, it's a convoluted system.
And we have dehumidifiers already up there?
We do.
But that's for use in the winter time?
They also work in the summer, too, yeah. They both run a little bit in the summer, the north rink now is running nonstop because of the year round ice that we have there. But the south rink, that dehumidifier, it's a concrete floor, so concrete floors, they just, they have moisture coming through their, your own.
Thanks, guy. Any other questions? Yes, Scott?
Bill, I, you'd understand the funding, as far as the four hundred thousand amount, is that like a standing fund for the maintenance of the building, or what's the definition of that?
So it's, it's a separate special revenue fund, and it, and actually, for the audit purposes, we do combine that with our general fund from accounting standards, but we keep it as a separate fund. It was leftover funds when that project was all paid off. In essence, it was leftover donations to the project. So we kept them segregated out, out of the operating funds, since they were from the project.
But it's essentially dedicated for this facility only?
Yep, it's restricted for the arena because they were originally given for the arena. So we couldn't pull them for the library, so to speak. It has to be on that facility.
It seems like it'd be very appropriate use of that fund, then the remaining three hundred thousand, two hundred and ninety five thousand, we'd be looking at possibly use for this chiller in the future, or some other work to be done in the building. That's still specific only to that number.
Correct.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Bill. Any other questions? Resolution on the floor, role call, please.
Joe. Yes. Quamie.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Craymeyer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under open unfinished business, we'll have a discussion on the open forum policy. We discussed a couple weeks back, there's a copy of the rules in your packet, Lynn's putting a copy on the, on the screen. There's also a history with the minutes, and I guess we'll just open up for conversation. I'll, I'll take it off. I think we've probably all been thinking about this a little bit in the last two weeks. And, you know, I think that when we moved last July to the current form of the open forum policy, I mean, the intent was clearly to provide transparent, open way for the public to communicate with their elected officials. I think we all agree on that. However, I would say that there's been some individuals who've taken advantage of that and have used it for other purposes, and have used it to make statements to the general public. And I think there's plenty of opportunities in forums for them to do that. That's not what the open forum is for. So I would personally like us to consider a modified version of the way we used to do it. I don't think we need to ask people to register in advance, but I think that in order for people to clearly have an opportunity to address their elected officials in an open way, I think we can most effectively do that if it's outside of the regular scheduled agenda for the council, it's off camera. If anyone has an issue that they need to be on camera when they address, I think they're here for the wrong reasons. This is for people to address the council, not the media. And so talking with other elected officials and other bodies in the county and the school district, that's the way they do it. They suggested that, they had success with that, it's open. If, I think the council can consider some sort of listening sessions if it just wants to be an open session, but as far as the open forum, I would like to see us consider moving it before the meeting, not having anyone have to register and off camera. I think it also would allow for the public, many members of the public, to be less intimidated, not knowing that they're going to be broadcast, and would be a little more intimidating, encourage more open dialogue. I think also it would encourage, to some of the points of the council, us to be engaged. If it's outside of the official agenda and outside the official meeting, we'll be able to ask some questions.
Right.
We'll be able to engage in a dialogue, which we all feel kind of awkward up here when someone addresses to the public meeting, asks us a simple, well, seemingly it's a simple question, it's not on the agenda, and it's just a better forum for us to engage with people back and forth. And, yeah, and then the last thing I'll say is, under the current open forum, if the council did want to take up an item that was brought forward, we can't do it because the agenda's already set. In this instance, it also allow us to, to be able to take action. If we decided, if there was unanimous consent to the council, we could consider an action. So anyway, those are my thoughts on moving that portion of the meeting outside. I still think we can achieve our intent of having interaction with the public, but I just think we could do it in a way that's, maybe not as entertaining to the public, but I think it would be more productive. So I would like to hear what others, I'm sure others have thoughts on this.
Your honor, yeah, I agree with that. It was an experiment that was tried, and we had good intentions, and I believe that there is, there is a great likelihood, like we, like we've seen, that that gets subverted and used to deliver a message to a larger audience than the actual spirit of the open forum with the council. I thought it worked just fine the way that we did it before, looking at the packet here, was it April sixteenth?
It was July last.
Okay, so this was the original.
June, sorry, June.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with what you said, that it doesn't need to be on camera as part of the regular council meeting. That could lend, that could lend some credibility to, you know, whatever claims are made, and being part of the official record. So I would, I would support, I would make a resolution that we, that we go back to the way it was prior to the most recent change, minus the requirement to register ahead of time, where it's done, you know, outside of the meeting, and it's not part of the official meeting, and it's not on camera.
Would it make sense, not to, let me just ask this, would it make sense to add, just have a simple motion directing staff to bring something back, what that looks like?
True.
So we don't get bogged down in any language?
Sure.
And give people the, you know, opportunity to weigh in on that?
Yeah.
So we have a process, and it can, you know?
I'm agreeable to that, so I'll draw that resolution.
Just a motion.
Make a motion to ask staff to reconsider a couple of the options.
Thanks, Tom.
I would second on the basis that we're going to discuss it this evening, so that staff have input on camera.
Absolutely.
That, that by and toward.
Yeah.
I don't want to cut this between my, my.
No, 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 absolutely, no. This is, this is intended to be, everyone on this council has the opportunity to weigh in, and staff can come back with.
So I will second that, you know, staff can take comments that they had tonight and write down it.
Yeah. Who's next?
Just a question. As far as, if there's a statement, I can understand that from somebody, but if there's a question that actually kind of is an ending answer, how would that person get that? You know, if, you know, John Doe comes up and asks a question, and it's a viable question.
When's the street going to be fixed?
Yeah, when they go fix the, yeah, or when that stop sign going to go back up or whatever? Is there an end game to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, well, that, we can bring that, you know, we can, you know, I think to Anthony, I think Anthony even discussed this last time, but just to have us be able to engage more in that, questions like, hey, staff, where are we at on this? What's the schedule? I think if we're off camera and out of the official meeting, it'll open up the ability for us to feel a little more open to having, you know, not taking official action, but actually having a, I don't know, you know, a, a, a. a clear way of bringing something back if the council decides to do that.
I think a perfect example is obviously what Becky brought up this evening. You know, she made a kind of a comment and looked for a response. And I think, you know, that it should be that probably in two weeks' time, that that response is kind of made or that we publish some sort of statement, you know, that basically covers that question. Because, you know, obviously in fairness, she asked a question. And I understand we don't necessarily want to respond this evening, because we may not have the answer and we might say something that is not, you know, entirely kind of like true. So we need to research it to make sure we do deliver the right answer. But I think somehow we have to have some limit that says, right, we will respond by a certain time, you know, so that anybody that comes and asks a question, you know, they can expect a time period in which they, the worst case, that they'd have to wait for an answer. Because the whole purpose of somebody coming up is to engage us, not, most are coming up to make a statement, statement. They're looking for an answer on something, regardless of what it is. So I think within, within the policy, we should have a mechanism that we're going to get back to somebody on, you know, to talk about, to give them an answer.
Good point. I think one thing to consider there is, you know, if that's something that staff, because there is a process, right? Like oftentimes, people maybe don't understand the process. But if the staff is able to answer that question the next day or the next week. Just for consideration, do we still publicly, you know, we want to make sure that the public understands that we're addressing this. So maybe just a rundown, maybe just a recap.
I still think that we should address it publicly. If we can get an answer to Becky tomorrow, then that behooves us, we should do that, you know. But, you know, for the people that are watching or listening, you know, or in the audience, you know, they may also be interested in the response and the answer.
Maybe we just recap it.
So somehow we have to recap it, you know.
Just like this was taken care, just so people.
This was taken care of.
Even if it's something that maybe feels bizarre, we can at least address it, that this is how it was. I think that's reasonable. Lauren?
You know, I think back to the first town hall meeting that Al had. And there were a lot of questions that were asked there. And the staff did an excellent job on reaching out to everybody with an answer within a couple of days. So I think that we need to kind of follow what we had done on that town hall meeting.
Certainly. Thanks, Lauren.
Now, if we're going to stick with the discussing of a topic no more than two times, then how are we going to handle this in the future so we don't have another person being accused of disrespecting somebody at the podium? Because we have to stop them because they're bringing up the subject again. I mean, when we got the forums in advance, we knew what they were going to talk about. I mean, is this something when they come to the podium, they should have to just give a quick clip of what they're going to discuss for, before they get into detail on it? I don't know, because otherwise I think we're going to continue to have the same problem with people bringing up the same topic over and over and over again. And if we still have the two-time limit on being able to discuss that, how do we go about stopping that before it ends up being, you're disrespecting the person at the podium?
Bob, just, I guess my on-the-fly response would be the council should decide if they want to keep with the two, two-time limit, and if so, then we just enforce it. And if they don't, if they don't, then we'll remove it from the policy, one way or the other, just, you know. And I think that's part we can, you know, if we have this policy brought back to us for consideration in two weeks, we leave that in there or we take it on? And then we enforce it.
I would, just my response to Brent is, I don't, I think that us enforcing our rules is not a show of disrespect. I think that, I don't have any problem with, you know, the way that that particular situation was handled. I think, I think, you know, that there was a deviation from the rules that we had set. And all of us as council members, I feel like should have the right to speak up when there is a deviation from the rules. So I don't, I don't see that being an issue if we call somebody out for not following the rules that we've set for. I'm inclined to leave that limit in there, just so that we can continue to have fresh, productive discussions versus, you know, beat the same dead horse over and over again. And, sorry, Scott, I kind of took your spot. I yield my time.
Go ahead, Scott.
I agree with a lot of what's been said here. I think that moving the forum to a period outside of our official council meeting will be better for the business end of it. So I'm in favor of that. But one of the puzzles that the staff may have an answer to when they come back with their recommendations is that with the current format, the comments become a part of the minutes. With it being outside of this format, then to what degree is there minutes or records that can be acted on? As you say, you know, the question was, how do we get back to somebody within a, whatever, two-minute timeframe, whatever the timeframe is? It becomes its own event or its own meeting then, so to speak. And to have any sort of, you know, record of discussion, what kind of commitments might be made as far as the response? If it's not a part of the official meeting, how do we then hold to a format? So I'm puzzled about that, and yet I don't mind the idea of moving it out of the formal meeting. So that will be something that hopefully over the next couple of weeks, if we have a chance to figure this and staff and bring our recommendations, maybe that can be incorporated into the plan.
I would think we can still have like the recap that Anthony was talking about. But yeah, we'll let staff kind of think through that.
And for me, I don't, I don't think it matters that it's in the council meeting. I mean, I think, you know, the goal is to encourage people to talk, you know. And if they feel, I mean, I think if they feel uncomfortable in talking, then, you know, maybe then we can accommodate that. But I mean, I think, you know, if they have a genuine question to ask of the council, then, you know, I'm quite happy for them to be within the realms of the meeting itself. Because I think, as you say, if you, you know, and I'm kind of, I don't mind it being on-camera. I think it's like, you know, that is, gives, you know, those people, there's a lot of people that watch the council meetings, you know. So I think, you know, if you take it kind of like, I mean, before we used to have it that you could speak, you know, prior to five fifteen, you know, we had like an open forum session and you had to put a piece of paper in and say what you were going to talk about. I think we've made it a lot smoother, a lot easier, you know, that people can come and talk. And I think that's something we still want to encourage people to do, you know, as opposed to making it somewhat restricted.
I agree, I don't disagree on the point of wanting to make it less restrictive. I think we can do that, we don't have to have people, in fact, I would argue, in fact, it makes it.
Almost.
More open. Because some people, they just don't want to be part of what the open forum has become. And I just really feel strongly that this is our business meeting, to take care of the business of the city that we're elected to do and people using it for other purposes. It's, hopefully it's a thing of the past. Yeah, Scott?
So I agree with this before meeting. I mean, I think we're five fifteen, so I think we should probably look at our staff a lot of the time. But if something comes up during the open forum part, we can put it on the agenda if we want. And then we can, you know, direct staff to do something or, so it's really a simple way to get things done a little quicker. If they come up with a question and we all agree that that question should be answered, we can direct staff, you know, make a motion to direct staff to get that answered by the end of a couple of weeks or whatever. If it's something, you know, needs to be addressed.
Good point.
You know, I think that's a, I'm all in favor of this movement to survive fifteen or five o'clock or whatever. Anyway, we shall also make a requirement that everybody should be here, because it was kind of lax. When we were on council before, it was, there'd be four or five of us here, but not everybody could make it. But I think we should just kind of make, we should all agree that we should all be here, whatever time it's going to be.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
I think that's a very important, Scott, because as far as being able to add something to the agenda, if it comes up ahead of the meeting, then we've got an opportunity then to act on something that can be acted on.
Get a motion.
Turn on timing, I think that's really good. I think one of the other, you talked about the intent, you know, what was the intent of the forum? And what are we trying to accomplish by that? I think a lot of folks are maybe looking for something that we cannot do in the current format. Something that's more of an uncontrolled, as Laura mentioned, a town hall. You know, where any topic, any subject, any length of time is just, you know, come and say whatever you want to say. Get it out there for people here. And that type of a town hall or a listening session or open house, I think there's a place for that. But within the business meeting isn't the proper place for that in my view. And so maybe we, we need to then, beyond this specific question of where, but how this addresses our meetings here, we come up with a separate process for having that kind of meeting periodically. Whether it's here or the library or somebody takes a big or something like that. And it's sort of regularly scheduled, so people can expect it and know it, know how the format works. And it's not random. And frankly, my experience with the previous town halls, I thought they were useful to a degree. But as the fact that they weren't very structured, there weren't any minutes taken, there wasn't any sort of official motions and actions and accountability, they ended up accomplishing very well. It allowed people to just sound off, but for what? It didn't seem to really advance anything positively. And so if we're going to do that kind of thing, maybe we can come up with a way that that can be structured that has some measurable value. And progress to.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Scott. Andrew, the administrator and I were having that exact conversation today. He had some thoughts on that, so I'm sure he'll bring that back as part of your recommendation.
Sure.
Okay. Let's open up to the public, if anyone wants to speak to this from the public, you're welcome to do so at this time. Please state your name for the right.
Mark Layton, I don't mean to be so vain, but obviously this is someone directed to me. Budget's a big deal. Lake Els is a big deal. Regional treatment center's a big deal. If someone brings those up two or three times, what's going to be? I take offense to that during your business meeting, I think it's the public's business meeting. My second question is, if you want to have it off-camera, Mr. Shiger, what are you afraid of? What is your concern? This is an open forum for the people to speak to the council on record. Now, if you don't want it on record, is this going to be a town hall meeting in your council chambers? Ooh, can't have that. I think there needs to be some room consideration here, and I appreciate the council bringing it to the attention during the council meeting. And I have a meeting in the hall. So number one, I think it's time for the people to talk to this council. I don't think there should be a limit on two or three times. And we all know that, you know, three minutes is a little tight. If you're going to discuss water quality at the catalyst, if you're going to talk about a roof at Regional Treatment Center, an air conditioner at the arena, you know, there are people out here that want answers. And I appreciate Mr. Hicks replying to the people. Never had that, not once. Been involved here for three, four years, never reply, a criticism, but never reply. And we can yin-yang about fifteen years and nine and a half years, we can yin-yang between population of Minnesota and the population of cities. How about a little respect? Trying to get the truth out of the people. And the people want to hear it, and a lot of people do watch this. And I applaud that. I could go on for another fifteen minutes, but I don't want to get past my three.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Layton. Anyone else like to address the council?
Bob, no offer results. I didn't plan on speaking at all today, but I, you know, appreciate the opportunity. I think this is the best conversation about this subject you've ever had. Just talking about options is really great. Really something to consider. This thing about the Bill of Rights, our First Amendment, is really on the line, no matter what stage of government you're at. It doesn't give restrictions on how many times you have to talk about things. Maybe I want to talk about things a lot. Who are you or anybody else to say, well, you can't, you can't talk about that? See, it's all these restrictions that I'm really against, because it's the free flow of information that builds our communities. So I'm all in favor of all these discussions and the staff and all these things. I wish I had been more prepared, I could have gave some suggestions, but maybe those. I would like to address Councilman Kwame on what was really accomplished on these town hall meetings. Well, I'll tell you, when people have a voice, there's something that builds inside of you that makes you part of the community, part of your world, and it makes you a better person. And maybe, you know, just seven or eight of them or however many we had, that was just a test run. But it doesn't make town halls a bad thing. So I could, you know, I think it should be maybe five minutes. People could talk for five minutes. No restrictions on the number of times you bring something. If you can't hear somebody speak five minutes and have the grace to hear what they have to say that's on their heart, I don't know, I don't know what to tell you. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Mr. Knowles. And I anticipate that you will have the opportunity to talk about this as it comes back. I anticipate that you'll have a conversation about this and come back. Anyone else wish you to speak to?
I'm Kirby Anderson. I don't live in the city, I'm a proud member of Elizabeth Township. But I'm on the school board. And I just want to discuss how we've handled what we, how we've, what we've come to as far as our public open forum meeting guidelines. When I got on the school board six years ago, we go through our training through Minnesota School Board Association, much like you do through League of Minnesota Cities. And they kind of drill right into us. Your meetings, your school board meetings are to do the business of the school. And they're open to the public, but they're not public meetings. You have public meetings, truth and taxation, you have open forums, you have the franchise tax thing. And so, and you have the option of opening your meetings, and that's what we're talking about tonight. I think the, the main thing that we try and look at, and I'm going to compare and contrast school district versus city, the main thing that we try and do at the school is if someone has a problem with whatever it is with their child, did you talk to the teacher? Okay, did you talk to the principal? If that didn't resolve your issue, did you talk to the superintendent? You can call and email us anytime you want. So it's kind of that chain of command thing. It's like if my electricity goes out, I don't call the president of the company, I call the service line and say, I can go up the chain of command. So that's an important thing here, and I see you guys have that same thing. If they have an issue with a stop sign or when a road's going to be done, we talk to the city staff. If that doesn't work, talk to Andrew. If that doesn't work, call or email one of you guys. See a lot of similarities here. I think the, what we have done is we have a three-minute limit, we do it after our meeting. We do ask people to register on the Thursday prior to a Monday meeting. And they just put their name, their contact information and what their topic is. And that's more or less just so we can kind of prepare ourselves for what they want to talk about, if there's any background that we need to look at, background information. And also to try and, we try and set it to fifteen minutes. So if you get twenty-five people, each one three minutes, then that gets to be too long. The, we do ours at the end of the, of the council meeting after we adjourn. We don't, we don't try and take any action on it that night, we do it, it's more of a listening session. If there's something that needs to be taken care of by staff, by teachers, by principals, then we forward that to them. Anybody can come in and talk, as long as they're a resident of the district or they are, have a parent, or if their parent are guardian of a student. We do it after the filming is done. We're trying to discourage, there are some people who don't feel comfortable being on camera and it tends to cut down on grandstanding as well. So that's, that's kind of how we do it. And we went through, every school district kind of modifies what the MSBA has suggested they have a policy on. We have our policy. We have our policy. League of Minnesota Cities has, has a recommended policy. And, and, uh, I don't have a horse in this race. So just sharing what we do and, uh, and you guys will, uh, will come to something collectively as well. So, and, uh, I guess, I guess the, I'll just close with one, one, maybe one thought. Our job is, you know, we run a fifty million, forty to fifty million dollar budget. And so we're doing the school business and we're not firemen. We're not, we're, we're, we're doing the long-term planning. We're planning where kids are going to go to school in five to ten years. We're planning on what, what we're going to do for the budget the next biennium. We're not concerned with, um, we have to have our staff take care of the day-to-day things. And I think that you guys have a, a common concern there too. Let your staff do their job, but at the same time, make sure that you're available by email, by phone and get it back to people. And, uh, I think the town halls are a great idea. Um, you may want to take them down to the caucus level type thing, we're doing by work. I know each one of you represents twenty-five percent of the city, uh, per councilman in each, in each quarter of the city. So, so that's something you might want to look at. But like I say, just, just some, uh, similar situation that we have and that's how we handle this.
Thank you, Kirby.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue? All right, so we have a motion directing staff to take some of your thoughts and concerns for this. You have the direction you need?
Yep.
Okay. So the motion is have direct staff to come back with a proposal for us to consider at either the next, I suppose we can take it through the committee of the hall and that gives us a chance to consider it before we pull it on the table. So, but, okay, is that good? All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same side? A motion to take this. Uh, there is no new business this evening. Win some announcements. Uh, there's a franchise fee open house here in the city hall, council chambers, Thursday night, March twenty-first.
Correct. Thursday from five to six-thirty. And it is a true open house with people coming in with the thought of, of milling around, talking to consultants. You don't believe they're using a formal presentation, but it's a tough time to ask questions of the consultants and staff and council members. We'd love to see you there as well.
I just will note, I have to work that evening, so, um, my regrets, but I'm hoping everyone else can make it and, um, I hope there's a good turnout from the public. Any other announcements, Lynn? All right. No other business before the council or adjourn?